Call the April fourteenth meeting of the Cambridge City Town Council is ordered. We'll be started with an opening prayer.
Okay, if you pray with me. Gracious heavenly Father, Lord of heaven and earth, we come humbly before you this evening and ask your presence and your guidance, Lord, as our leaders seek your will and their planning for this, for this community we love so much, Lord, just guide their thoughts, their minds, their actions, or grant us a spirit of cooperation and unity as we move forward. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Jerry, you want to?
Okay.
Hey, Jim McLean is absent. Mike Amy?
Here.
Debbie McKinley?
Here.
Gary Cole?
Here.
And Jim King is absent. Okay.
All right, all right, I need approval of the minutes.
We've got two sets.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from March tenth.
Yeah.
Yep. Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from March twenty-sixth.
I second it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we need the claims.
Yes, we have.
Okay, so you'll sign both. That one and the next one.
I'll make a motion, we accept the claims.
I second it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion, we accept the fines.
I second it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was fun.
Great, we should get through these things.
Speed it up.
All right, uh, shows we have no public hearing tonight, is that correct still as of this time?
Yes.
And we have no guests. Kinda like my house most of the time. When it comes to business. All right, next we'll move on to unfinished business. First one is progress report for all ongoing blighted properties, new blighted forms received, and update on letters mailed to the three property owners on Fourth Street.
So I gave you two more today too that were added to the front street.
Oh, okay.
Bob, do you want copies of these blighted forms? Do you want to see them?
At some point you can give them, but you don't need them right now.
I think I got five, is that right?
Um, I added, I printed two more. I printed, printed them all off, so then there were two added today that you should have in your middle. You have two eighteen and two twenty-six. No, two twenty-two and two thirty.
No, all I've got's.
They should be at the back fingers.
Is this, is your key?
Okay, you don't have any?
Thank you. Anything new on any of these properties, anybody have?
I sent letters to, oh, wrong. Fourth Street, um, there was some stuff picked up, but not enough.
Is that, uh, the two-ten, two-twelve, two-fourteen, two-sixteen, two-eighteen, two-twenty? That one?
Well, just the first three that you named off, those others are in this packet now.
Okay.
Joe, you keep it started at like a spreadsheet showing the different actions we chow she had?
I don't have a spreadsheet, I have it written down, but I don't have a spreadsheet.
I just find it could be helpful, at least as we go forward, so that the minute somebody says something about a property, we know what action has been taken so far on.
Yeah, those three over there, there was some straightening up, but.
Of course, these are just complaints, these aren't letters you sent.
I sent three, I sent three.
The first three are letters you have.
And were they, did you, were they just that preliminary letter saying that your property couldn't be deemed unsafe, it's not the actual order of.
No, no, just clean, pick up the stuff, straighten things up, uh, front and back, both sides of the street.
These weren't unsafe building letters in?
No, 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 these were just.
Just clutter and.
Clutter, cluttering property, is what I've sent out. I did, I did send one letter to the house that's on Parkway, um, that is down in Florida, the address I have, I sent it registered, I've not gotten anything back, and that was six weeks ago. So I don't know how you want to proceed with that, but I think nothing.
As I understand, we do have money left over from the Wayne County EDC for blighted properties and tear downs, but we've of course gotta run them through the process.
Right.
I emailed her the day about the deadline for the money and how much we have, but I haven't heard back, but at some time this summer, I think is the deadline, since we didn't tear the properties down on Front Street, we have extra money.
We can still submit new stuff?
She said, she said we could, I tried to get a verification and I couldn't get a definite, but what she indicated earlier, there would be money, because we had money that was in our account basically.
That's strictly for properties that we're saying are unsafe though.
Right.
Yeah, be unsafe. Not like these blighted ones.
Unsafe and abandoned, like we can't help with that, we just have to go through the process.
It's like old Gary, the last thing, for the one that we did submit to them, the four-twenty West Main Street, they wanted to see the final action taken and what that amounts to, it's a recorded document that's meant, that shows that we did have a hearing after the initial order was issued to her on November fourteenth, we had a hearing on December the eleventh, actually this goes back to twenty-twenty-three, and this council confirmed that order to tear down the property and you gave even additional six days off your, remember she was here and said she needed the time, but didn't think even then, and she didn't, but then I'm having this for Sherry's signature, we'll record that and I think that'll make EDC happy with what they need for their file.
So we'll get the reimbursement for this asbestos.
So we'll get your notary signature this way.
That's for the burn tear down, right?
Yes.
We've got everything except the asbestos remediation reimbursed, and that's what this is.
Good. Is there anything I can help you with on these, getting this stuff rolling?
I don't know, the, the property on Parkway Drive, if he hasn't heard back, I don't know, I don't know what the parameters are, but I mean, we probably need to start a process on that, so we can take advantage of the funds if we can get them, because it's.
It has not been yet deemed an unsafe building?
It is not.
No, it's not. We need to come from our acting building commissioner or someone on behalf of the town, and then because it's a total removal, a hearing is required, you could have a next month meeting to then affirm, rescind, or confirm that order, so that we can have all the steps taken, all the recordings due.
Okay. I think we need to get that processed.
I think we need to get started so we can take advantage of the funds.
Yeah, and if we want Joe to do that as acting kind of commissioner, we can do that, I'll help you with the letter as that next step.
And you'll be acting commissioner for how long?
And then July the other, interview Thursday.
Well, yeah, no, but I mean.
Now, we're going through those issues associated.
Yeah. There's a lot of moving pieces for that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, anything else on blighted properties, anyone else has? I think we need to get going on those ones that actually need tear down.
I do too, might as well.
The, the properties just need cleaned up, we just need to stay on that and send them their second letter.
I could send them their second letter, and then we've got these seven here, so I don't know, I can send those, because this is all cleanup, and if you drive around and look, they're, they're legitimate.
They're legit, yeah, I know some of them, I haven't been to all of them, but I know some of them are.
So the cleanup ones, yeah, I think he could go ahead and do the letters on those, and then none of those are tear downs, just all.
No, it's just.
No, it's all cleanup.
And then second letters to the, to the three.
To the, yeah. Well, the second letter, does it list the fine on the second letter? Do you remember Bob? You already received one letter, I have to go.
I'm more familiar with unsafe building.
Okay.
First one's a warning, and then the next one is the order with the required action, and then action by council, on just the we, in unsightliness one, I'm not sure we have quite the process as the funding. I have to look at it again to see what he's got.
I'm pretty sure it's pretty well defined.
Eight minutes.
I think it poses a fine, the next.
That's what I'm thinking it's gonna get them fined.
Yeah, I think we just have to go through the motions and make that happen.
I'll help you.
All right, I think I have everything signed down, any to sign? All right, well. Got shuffled in with all these other papers I'm looking at. There it is. Okay, uh, update on Wi-Fi in the park, the people who'd be updating us on the Wi-Fi in the park aren't here tonight. It sounds like things are moving forward on that though, uh, some pretty positive feedback.
Can't, a grant for the cameras.
Yeah, he applied for a grant for the cameras in the park, and we were talking to New Lisbon Telephone Company or whatever, NLC, about some coverage down here, so.
I'll put that on the next.
It sounds like it's gonna be a pretty good deal for us. All right, since we don't have anything official on that, move on, see further discussion on the sale of property on South Walnut Street.
Well, the little problem, I mean, just because we want that to be assessed lower doesn't mean it's assessed, so we don't have to do that particularly, they said there's a format for the property owner to ask for reassessment, really not for just another interested party to say, hey, assess this property so we don't have to use this, you know, appraisal method, and so I, we may be stuck with if we really wanna sell that, to actually go out and get it appraised.
Well, we have, we have someone we use for that, no, we were.
Yeah, I mean, we, I think David Brown maybe has appraisal or manipulation.
I think we've been in the past, I think.
I couldn't think of his name, I think David Brown.
So the property owners.
Well, what you, well, see, we are the property owners.
Yeah, okay.
We are the property owner, and so, and there's a time for us to ask for a reset assessment, which is not here right now, I think, although we just got our tax statement, so it could be coming up, so we could ask for it then, but the, how, how much we want it really, you remember, it's like if it's under a certain amount, then we don't have to have it appraised, we can just sell it to an interested party after formal public notification, but if it's above an amount, we have to get compare, I think, maybe two appraisals, so that we're not looking like we're cheating the public by selling it for an undervalued amount to some interested party.
Do we know what's last appraisal for it?
Well, there's not, there's never been an appraisal.
Okay, so it hasn't ever been done, it's just a piece of vacant property?
Ten times what we thought it might be worth.
Right.
So, um, you know, I, and maybe it's worthwhile for us to get it appraised anyway, so that when we get bids in, it's, they're legitimate and we're not cheating ourselves.
Yeah, I think.
So it may not be a bad idea, sometimes things work out that way.
Yeah, I think we should just come back the appraisal.
Go ahead.
Yeah, get it done, and then we'll have it in our back pocket if we need it.
You might as well do it right.
And, and if nothing else, at least get that cost reimbursed, a bid's gonna at least cover that, so we're not outing.
Yeah, right, that's a good idea.
Then, do you want me to try to get somebody on that, or?
Do you mind?
No.
Yeah, if we don't have somebody to.
Yeah, I don't know anybody.
Okay.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
I will do that.
All right, next up.
That's why you were here, right Charlie?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're still trying to get it to you. Now, I may have praised her an outrageous amount, but the.
Yeah, the wheels have come out too slowly.
There, there are times when there are neighbors from up on Fourth Street that were back on that property, um, is there anything that I should do when I hear people back there? Because.
They used to call that Fourth Street trails, I mean, people were, kids would ride bikes back there, and there was actual trails too there.
I used to ride my mini bike back there when I was a kid.
So I mean, it's, there are people that go in and out there, I'm sure at times, right now they're probably looking for mushrooms, but.
But if they are back there and it's the town property and they get hurt, what happens?
Well, do we, do we have no trespassing signs up for anything else to stay up? We might wanna consider that.
I think there were at one time.
Do we actually know where the property boundaries, the boundaries are exactly?
We poached them, so I didn't say, well, where I walked in, it wasn't marked as such, so.
There's no per se entrance to it, it's just.
Just kinda wild wood.
Yeah. Actually, actually, you have, really have to go through someone else's property to almost get to it.
Oh.
I think on your side and then on, on Fourth Street also, so it's kinda landlocked.
Are they doing things back there that could be dangerous, I mean, does it look like they're just walking or looking for mushrooms?
Sometimes they'll be back there on quads or four-wheelers, things like that.
I'm assuming it's not fenced off, that, that you could definitely call in, we can address that.
And there's a guy that'll ride his lawnmower around back there, which.
Is he mowing or is he just riding?
He just rides.
Just riding. Just getting out of the house for a little.
If we're concerned, then we might put no trespassing.
It's not a bad idea.
They've probably done it for years, I bet.
Okay.
Can we, can we do no trespassing on, on public property though?
Yeah, I mean, if it's not really open, just because it's public, that means open to public, our park closes at a certain time.
Right, right, I mean, you can access it from the back of the old MEG parking lot there, I think.
I think there's a fence, oh, still a fence up back there though, right?
Yeah, on the backside of the MEG.
Yeah, there's still a fence.
To the north of that fence, there's access to it.
Yeah, that fence is down back there.
Are you gonna fence it if you get it? How are you gonna keep them out of there?
I will at least put, I've got some logs that I can put around there.
Yeah.
And put no trespassing signs up.
Private property, that helps.
Yes, private property, and then I can, and the people that are on there, they're not, I don't think that I'll have a problem with them if I talk to them, if it's my property.
Yeah, and if you do have a problem, then you definitely call.
Yeah.
I think just over all these years, people, especially on Fourth Street, just used it as, they said they used to call it the trail or whatever, bike trails.
I mean, hopefully it's gonna be sold the next sixty days.
Right.
Get the praiser out there real quickly, so you don't worry about it, you've gone this long.
Right.
Of course, I'll say that and somebody will praise.
Yeah, I was back there all the time when I was a kid, I mean. All right, well, I guess, is that all the discussion on the, on the property sale? All right, we'll move on, new business, Runkey's Large Trash Day for in-town residents.
You know we have those twice a year, and this will be our spring cleanup, and it's just for in-town only.
Yep, May twelfth.
Yep, May twelfth, so set it out, it's a regular Monday trash day.
You just put it out with your regular trash?
Yes.
They'll get it, okay.
Are there limits on what they'll get, is it furniture?
They'll, they'll take, they'll take furniture, but it has to be wrapped in plastic anytime, and then.
No electronics?
Yeah, they won't take electronics. Or tires. Or people. That's where you're going next.
No, I wasn't going there.
Only crafty plastic.
Rolled up in a cart, did he?
Yes.
That's how I wanna go out.
In a brown, runkey roller.
He's gone. All right, next up, we've got our reports, so first up is Town Marshal. Oh, what do we got here? We have a guest.
Oh, she's visiting, you're visiting.
Put you out of the house yourself.
I know.
CEO and President of Wayne County Chamber has made her appearance, graced us with her appearance.
I know, I just smiled and said hi with, I thought you would.
Yeah, Melissa Fance, I'm, as Bob said, President and CEO of the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce.
Oh my.
I just thought that I would start coming periodically and listening in and staying in contact with you all, in case there's ever anything that we can do to assist you, so.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Well, thanks.
Absolutely, so whether I'm here in person or, or not, I am a phone call away, but just really wanted you all to know that, that I pay attention even when I'm not here, but sometimes being here matters, so.
We may reach out in the future.
Sounds great.
If I've been on that board for many years, she's one of the best.
Thank you for coming.
That's nice.
Thank you.
Appreciate having you here. All right, you're up, Richard.
I don't have anything other than, I'd like to get with Joe and start maybe looking at doing some of the curb painting that we need to get done, if it's, I know they're busy right at the moment, but, um, I think start taking a look at that. It's starting to warm up where you can do it, so.
The, the no parking zones and things like that?
Yeah, my paint's gone now, and we're having some issues, so.
We've always got people parking where there's no parking spaces.
They're not, they're not always marked very well either, so.
No, yeah, something to work on. All right, next up, fire chief.
Do we have any indication of how the process is going for the new, uh, park, uh, fire station venue?
I have not been updated by anyone on it.
He's not here, Jim.
Just wondering if we need to start planning something different around the Fourth of July, or if we, there's still a lot of having it done, but then.
I don't think it's gonna be done.
That would be awful quick.
Well, the way it's looking, it's.
Yeah, as wet as it's been, and they haven't been in there.
If not, we're gonna really make sure that they get all the vehicles out of the park after fireworks goes.
Cause you guys will extend across the street and go walk.
Yeah, cause if we haven't used the back part, we're gonna have to.
Right.
Have more stuff on the other side of the street, so we need to make sure that they, it didn't better last year, and I think that the board's putting out the word that they was gonna tell the cars, help.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think we need to make sure that's reinforced this year, that we definitely have to have them all gone.
Right.
Yeah.
Other than that, as far as I know, everything's moving along pretty smoothly.
Reed Hospital's still keeping you busy, I take it.
Absolutely.
Well, you're on the fire department, I told him I would write a letter for your signature, chief, to send the people that have permits.
Yes, sir.
See if you think that sounds legitimate, then just close a copy of the ordinance, the new ordinance to them, of course, just fill in the different permit holders here.
Right, up there in top.
Yeah, I tried to be nice to them, but, you know, hopefully they understand the need for such a false alarm ordinance, so.
Has that been any worse, better, anything?
It's been, it runs in spurts, it's, a lot of it depends on who they get and checked into the recovery works, that's where a lot of it come from, and if they get spoken to, they can't seem to control, then it gets really bad.
Yeah.
But, but the factories have been doing pretty decent, they, they know about this and that helped, just that and advertisements that we were running through.
That's me.
Good shit, Bob, thank you.
Does that sound all right?
Mm-hmm. If I knew, I should've sounded like I would, I'd ask you.
It didn't stop when I pushed it, the first time it kept going.
Yeah, I think it looks good. I'll get, I'll get my, ordinance, get this on my computer so I can, uh.
Yeah, so we can start enforcing that. Good deal, thanks, Bob.
Very good, thank you, Bob.
Sure.
Thanks, Joe. All right, Public Works Superintendent, Joe, what you got for us?
Uh, the park is getting together, I don't know if you guys have been over there and signs up.
You guys work hard.
The, uh, the old benches were painted, the one new bench is in, we've got to pour concrete for the second new bench, and it's been pretty wet, so that hasn't happened. Milestone is gonna start milling tomorrow.
Okay.
For the streets, we're gonna take some millings, and then there, we've already had a couple of phone calls about people wanting millings, so that's good.
Yeah.
Uh, when they were up there, when they did the new curbs, up there on Shawnee, they put a new catch basin in, they brought in, um, a jet truck for the storm sewer, we need to look at that.
Is that up there where Biso, Dave's property?
Yeah, that, that line was pretty bad, they put a new catch basin in, because they're getting ready to put, they're gonna asphalt up there, but the rest of the storm sewer, we need to get company in here and look at these, they were pretty bad up there, they went from Shawnee up to Delaware, and then back down and across, they're pretty, pretty bad. I know that money's there.
Do you know how much it would cost?
I have no idea.
Cause we have a little money in stormwater that we've been building.
So what I would recommend is we get somebody in here to take a look at them, and then see where we're at.
Get a quote on that, on getting those opened back up.
Do you have any idea who you would call?
I have no idea, would have to look into that first, and then go with that. Uh, I gave Debbie a second, uh, quote for the building maintenance for up here and the water tower, or the water treatment plant, um, so that's two of them. We're still waiting on the quote to come in for the wellhouses out at the well field, for new roofs on the wellhouses and soffit and fascia. So. The park's going pretty good, I did get quotes for three big trees over here in the park. If we wanna do that, we did take some down on the east side of the park that were there.
Yeah.
But these were not as tall, so we could handle those, these that are over here on the east side by the big shelter half by the creek here, there's a locust and an ash and a big sycamore that need to come down.
I saw there's a big sycamore that came down, it's kind of across the river over by the bridge here, that.
There is another one, the one that you emailed about, that one is going, that's on DNR, as far as I'm understanding, when that goes, and that, that bridge right there on Delaware, that is county, so if it goes across, we're gonna have to clean, get it out of the way, but that's on theirs, but if you look down the east side of the river right there, there's a second sycamore in there that is washed out, and it's gonna come down, and it is split and cracked.
Yeah.
I have a picture of it, but I left my phone in the truck, but I can send it to you if you got it.
I rode my bike by the day, I can send it.
Yes, so that it has washed out, and if that goes, it's probably gonna go in, fall into the east side of the park.
Oh, yeah.
Just the way, the, the way the leaves are on the tree, um, so there's some tree work that is, that needs addressed.
Okay.
If we can handle them, we're cutting them, Ryan and Ron and I are cutting them down, but our bucket truck is only thirty, twenty-five, thirty feet, that's not tall enough for us to safely do those trees.
No, those are big trees.
Yeah, so.
I was afraid that one falls on that bridge and then cracks the bridge.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a big tree.
Yeah, it's a big tree.
So, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of trees that need addressed.
Yeah, yeah.
And say with the park, or the park, the, uh.
Cemetery.
Cemetery, those two, two pine trees that came down, they haul them off, we are waiting for the ground to dry, I understand there are graves that we need to level, back off from settling, and then see, very aware of that, it's been wet, I'm not gonna create more work.
You're just gonna waste.
So we're getting to where we're drying out, and we'll be able to get in there and fix those.
Get the grave.
We've had a few phone calls, I understand, loved ones, I get it, I'm not gonna create more work for three of us, I'm not gonna do it.
Is there solid ground near that tree, that tall one, that we can get in there with to help you with that, with the big truck?
That's awful sandy right there, Joe.
How many trees are you talking, that need to come down then, Mike, did you just say seven or eight?
Uh, no, there's three down here by the big shelter house that.
And you got quotes on those already, though?
Yeah, I have three quotes on those, the ones that now on the east side of the park, there is an ash tree that I'm surprised is still up, that big sycamore, and then there's a couple more dead ash closer to forty on the east side of the park too, we took seven or eight trees out of the east side of the park that were dead.
Yeah, the ash trees probably just come down, because they're all dying, they're dead, I, my whole woods, I've lost three acres of ash trees.
Right, and that's what we're into now on both sides of the park, and that cemetery, so, but as far as that, all that sand?
Sand, we can get it, if you get a place where we can get in, about, yeah, we can get by the trees and cut the, help you with that, if you get a place situation, we'll get the truck in safely.
Okay.
Talking about trees, Joe, did my memo help that one resident to ask questions?
Yes, absolutely, it did, and gave me more understanding to tell people, which I knew, but I wanted to make sure, and then having that.
Trying to organize it all, sort of different possibilities.
The understanding I, I told, I mean, I can go up there and pick up stuff, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's on there, it's on them, it's, get to know your neighbors, you know, I mean, I don't know what else you want us to do, I mean, that's on, it's your property, you know, so, but yes, it was very, very clear.
I may get with you, um, after the meeting here, we could get together, say Wednesday or Thursday this week, and just kinda go over where we are with everything on Public Works and all this stuff, and just, just see where we stand and what.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
What direction we need to go in the next month, you know, cause who knows?
Yeah.
And right now, all right, uh, anything else?
Skid steer went down again today.
Great.
Yep, it, yeah, it made a mess.
Drive motor, or?
Um, I think it was the hydros, but it is back over, we just got it back from John Deere, and it went down again, so.
Pretty good chunk of change on there.
Yes, yes, so hopefully I'll get a phone call back on that.
All right.
And see what is going on.
Yeah, we need that.
Yes, every, yeah, that's, that's the only reason I sent it, because we have to have that, reuse it daily.
Yeah.
That, and pretty much the backhoe daily, so.
Okay, well, I'll have to look at you, where are we gonna find the money to fix this? Okay, uh, Bob?
Nothing other than what we've already talked about.
All right, nothing from the town, that's good.
Probably, guys.
When the town attorney doesn't have any, that's a good thing.
It's probably a record, it's a record.
All right, yeah.
I came to a good one.
I know, these are easy peasy.
And normally we don't have. Uh, no, none, none, none.
Yeah, this doesn't happen very often.
All right, uh, we'll go around the horn here, Gary, do you have anything?
No, I don't believe so.
Sherry?
No.
Debbie?
No, I don't have anything.
I'm good, if no one else has anything, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Let's do it.
Is that your motion?
Let's do it. Let's do it.